And I would like to call this to order and before we start our public comment period, Mr. Town Manager, could you please read the disclaimer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a reminder to everybody that these meetings are recorded. So we will post it on the town website once it is completed. If you wish to ask a question or make a comment, I ask that you please use the raise hand function whenever possible. If you don't have a name, if you're calling in on a phone, I may call on you and ask for your name so that we have it for the record. So we have everybody properly labeled as well. Other than that, if we do get interrupted for some reason, we'll shut down the meeting immediately and send out a new meeting link for people to rejoin. And I think that covers it.
Okay, thank you. I don't think there's anybody on here that is not identified.
So far, so good.
Thank you. So we will begin with our public comment period. And if there are residents or guests who wish to make a comment or ask a question, now is your opportunity. You could raise your hand. And the town manager will call on you. Well, I'll call you. I'll call you. I think I saw, I meant the hand of the Zoom, but I think I saw Matt Zaff first. Thank you. Matt Zaff, Dorset Avenue. Just making a comment in my role as a citizen right now. Two questions, one question, one statement. The question which I put in the chat function is, I don't know how to do the raise hand function on Zoom. So if anyone can put that in the chat, that would be wonderful because I looked all around.
It might not be, it might not be on the Zoom.
I will, I will post the directions in the chat function for people to have access to that.
But I know that there are other, there are other programs where it's actually in there. So thanks for bringing that up.
Sure. My comment relates to the recent reopening of Little Falls Parkway to vehicular traffic. And my request that the town council and/or mayor write a letter or some sort of motion to Montgomery County Parks, expressing the desire to, for them to reverse their decision and to once again close it to vehicular traffic. It's, I personally was out on the Capitol Crescent Trail this weekend and it was beyond overcrowded. I literally felt unsafe from a COVID standpoint. And the reasons cited by Montgomery Parks just don't make sense and are honestly easily manageable. So just hoping that if we continue the pressure.
Okay, well, thank you. As you know, I signed the petition. I have been lobbying and calling. And honestly, I don't think that the department or anybody is going to change that. But so that's, you know, that's what I told you before. And I know that you worked on getting lots and lots of citizens. But I think that they've decided for many reasons that, that they're going to keep it open during the winter. And we don't have any power over it. I mean, our council can pass a resolution, but as I told you, Matt, I don't think that's, that's not going to change anything. I think your best bet is to lobby the planning, you know, the Parks Department or our council member Freedson. But we, you know, we're, and as a matter of fact, you know, there are a lot of residents that live in Kenwood that want it open, you know, so it's not as if, it's not as if it's a majority of the people they're hearing from that, that want to, want to close it. I think it should be closed. But anyway, so that's all I can tell you. But thank you for bringing it up. I think Amy, remember to say your name and your street because this is being recorded.
Hi, it's Amy Rona, Grantham Avenue. I just wanted to second Matt's request. And you know, I understand that y'all don't have jurisdiction over this matter. But you know, the government reverses decisions all the time based on citizen input. We have almost 1,500 signatories of the petition, which I believe is like more than the total number of residents in Kenwood. So I mean, certainly more than the people in the condos who are also complaining. So I mean, regardless of whether y'all have jurisdiction or not, we would really, really appreciate support via a letter, you know, to the Parks Department, just to show that citizens still think about this and still care. I went running on the, on the Capitol Crescent Trail on Saturday and, or I'm sorry, yesterday, it was 30 something degrees and it was packed, you know, even with a mask. I, you know, I told my kids not to go on it because I just don't think it's safe from a COVID perspective. I don't think it's safe from a getting hit by a bike, quite frankly, perspective. So, you know.
Amy, I, I'm sorry, I meant, I responded to you, by the way, and I, I put it in my, I put it in my draft and I never sent it. I'm sorry. But I totally agree with you is all I can say. And I've already contacted, I mean, I can write another email, but I don't think it's going to change anything. I think that, I think you need to put pressure on the decision makers and, and, and maybe it should all be directed to the county executive, who I think would have, but.
I just sent a note to Earl's office and, you know.
And I'll be happy, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to talk to both of you offline tomorrow to strategize. But, but you know, another letter from me isn't going to change anything. But let's strategize.
Yeah, I appreciate your letter, Jeffrey. I didn't know you already sent one as mayor.
Well, I not only sent one, but I've called and I've.
I really appreciate that. I wasn't aware.
I've talked to, I've talked to the planning board chair. I've talked to council members and on and on. So, you know, I'm with you. I would presume most of our council is. But I don't think that, you know, and I'm glad you're bringing it up tonight. I, I had anticipated you'd be here. So let's talk tomorrow. Let's strategize tomorrow.
What about giving the, Brandy's had her hand up and I'd like to participate in this discussion too.
Go for it.
Thank you. I just wanted, I wanted to follow up on your point, Jeffrey, which I think was a good one, which is that it would be more powerful to send a letter to Freedson or the county council with a copy to the, to the director of the Parks Committee. And I don't know why we wouldn't talk about doing that right now. I mean, I think, I think there would be support on the, I'm guessing, maybe some support on the council for sending a letter from the council.
Yes.
Over the head of the Parks Commission in order to let them know that the council would like them to recon, ask the Parks Commission to reconsider. So why wouldn't we talk about that?
You're welcome to draft it and we can all sign it tomorrow. We don't, I, that's fine.
Could I ask Matt or Amy if they've already drafted something like this to draft it for us instead? I mean, since I haven't been drafting these letters.
They already, they haven't, there's a petition. Did you not sign the petition?
I signed the petition that was circulated, that Matt circulated. Yes, I did sign that. But I'm just wondering.
Brandy, I'd be happy to draft a letter on behalf of the council and you guys can edit.
That could be part of our strategy is actually to generate a draft of a letter which we could then sign. That's my point. And it sounds like Amy and Matt have already done the legwork.
We can do that and get it to all and get you all tomorrow to put your name on it. And I'll continue my personal, I will continue my personal crusade.
Great. I, I, I know Mike Riley myself, but he, he didn't seem to respond even to me on a personal level to, to my request for that. So.
Okay. Well, all I can say is don't, don't have any great expectations about it.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's, you know, they've already, they've already, as I think some of you saw, they've already given an official response for the reason. And, and it's the same kind of thing as to why we can't get a traffic light at Greystone and River. It's the same kind of mentality because it's, it's, it involves way more people than just the ones that border the Little Falls Parkway like we do and have access to it. It involves traffic, manpower, everything else. I mean, I'm not trying to give their, their response. I'm not trying to side with them, but I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, I've been involved in this kind of games.
We write letters, we write letters like this on a regular basis. This seems to be a popular issue. So.
Well, I mean, it's a feel-good thing to write it, but I, but I'm not, as I'm so mad and I, I'm not optimistic about it. And.
Jeffrey, do you feel that the reason that they, that the official reason is the actual reason? Or do you feel that they're getting more pressure from the residents of Kenwood? And that's why they're deciding to?
It's not only from Kenwood. It's all, it's all the people that want to get from north of us to south of us. And all the, you know, the traffic that's created and everything else. And in Kenwood, in Kenwood, you know, they've, the majority, I guess, of the people that they've heard from in Kenwood are concerned. And I know that the council president knows about this. They're concerned about the, all the cut through traffic and the extra cut through traffic and, and the danger to pedestrians and children and everything else. So.
Well, that's again.
Amy, you had said that you thought there were some ways to mitigate the problem in Kenwood that the Parks people could take. What would be?
They could put up, you know, traffic calming measures, cones and bollards in Kenwood along with the, the other measures that they already put up. I mean, I just think that the, their main point is that they don't have the manpower, but they just need to think out of the box a little bit about this manpower issue. You know, like, what do we care if it opens at seven, for instance, on Saturday? If they need, you know, more manpower, they could open at eight or 8:30. No one cares.
I think that, as I, as I told Matt about 10 days ago, the main way to, the only way that this might be overturned is if you get thousands and thousands of people. It's not going to be a let, you know, more, another letter from me or signed by our council.
Yeah. I mean, luckily, we are getting thousands of people.
It's all about getting, it's all about getting. And the pressure needs to be put on county executive Elridge and on, and Andrew. I don't know, did, today there was a meeting with Councilor Freedson. Did that come up, Matt, in the meeting?
Not, not at today's meeting. It has come up before. I, I don't want to speak for him necessarily, but my, my understanding of it, the long and short is that he's personally, personally in favor of keeping it closed, but has sort of indicated that it's not, not really his decision. And so he has raised, as you said, you know, Kenwood and the other developments on, on Little Falls here, I think have been pretty vocal since the beginning against the roads being closed. And I think between that and the decrease in the numbers that they had seen over the last couple of weeks, that sort of drove the decision that they had made.
And it's also the, the commuters complaining, the same ones that, that don't want a traffic light at Greystone and River. So that's the politics of it. And that's why I said from the beginning, you got to get many, many more people. So thank you for being here tonight and let's talk tomorrow to try to continue to strategize.
Right. Thank you, Jeffrey. And Brandy, I'd be happy to.
But.
I'd be happy to draft a letter and send it to you.
But by the way, have, have the, what about some of the other citizens associations that border Little Falls Parkway?
So I know that Kenwood too.
Is Chevy Chase West?
Chevy Chase West, there are people who are asking the board to write a letter. Kenwood too, they're going to write their, I think it's an HOA or something, or they call it a board or an HOA. I know a friend is asking them to write a letter. They had already, the board had already come out in favor of car free weekends and they had asked their citizens to write letters, but they are bringing it up and then they're going to write a letter as well.
But you also might want.
There's also Green Acres, there's West Moreland Hills. There's many communities that, you know.
You might want to also get Chevy Chase Village, the town of Chevy Chase, all the, all, all the, these people, their residents use that Parkway for, for recreation. I mean, I personally think the Parkway should be closed permanently, but that's a whole other matter. So thanks a lot. And we'll talk tomorrow. Is there anyone else? Is there any other resident or guest that wishes to speak? Okay, thank you.
Educated that, no.
Okay, thank you, sir. We will now move to approval of the agenda. This is an opportunity to add or subtract anything from the agenda, in particular, the consent agenda. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is, thank you, Peel. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Shaw, second, Zoe Gassar. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All this much. Thank you very much, council. All right. Our next item is the hearing motion to consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Paula Marquez. Is it pronounced Marquez?
Yes.
Um, yes. Well, it's just Marcus. Yes.
Marcus, on behalf of Helene Sapphire, to enclose the existing back porch of the property located at 4723 Fallstone Avenue. So we will begin the hearing. Today is December, and this is, of course, being recorded. Today is December 7, 2020. This is a hearing before the town of Somerset Council for permit application number 20-12-1C, to consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Paula Marquez, on behalf of Helene Sapphire, to enclose the existing back porch of the property located at 4723 Fallstone Avenue. We ask the residents to be limited to one comment each and that they be limited to two minutes at a time. The town manager will call on residents by listed name or the last four digits of the phone number if no name is provided. When you speak, please state your name and street before you make your comment. When your time is up, a buzzer will sound and you will be asked to please finish your thought. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Second, the applicant will present their application. Third, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Fourth, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision and a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of 30 days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just quickly, the applicant Paula Marcus got her county permit in late July of this year and around that time began meeting with us and was in contact with the town staff about applying for a permit with the town of Somerset. In September of this year, Ms. Marcus submitted an application that included the building permit fees, the county permits, and the, the plans to enclose the rear porch. At that time, Ms. Marcus engaged with our town engineering consultant Doug Lowmeyer to ensure that the correct documents were received. Finally, in November of this year, a completed application was submitted with neighbor signatures, a full-size set of plans, and any, all remaining documents required for the application. Dr. Feather did look at the site and there are no trees that are impacted by this work. So no tree protection and no tree removal is required. With that, I'll turn it over to Doug. You are muted, Doug. Doug, you have to unmute yourself.
Hello.
You're here now.
Good evening. The applicant has submitted an application for demolition permit, the building permit to remove the existing screen porch at the rear northern side of the existing house and to add a new addition in its place. Some other interior improvements are also planned. Lots located on the corner of Fallstone Avenue and Surrey Street. The proposed additions are approximately 17 feet by nine feet and is the same size and shape as the existing porch. The proposed addition is approximately 40 feet from the front property line along Surrey Street, 20 feet from the northern side property line, and 65 feet from the eastern property line. All three of those setbacks exceed the minimum front side and rear setbacks in the town code. The building lot coverage will not change. And I recommend the council approve the application for demolition permit and a building permit for the proposed addition at 4723 Fallstone Avenue. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, would the applicant like to comment on that report or add any additional items?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I'm fine with the project. I did have a question about the, the view of our staff of the adequacy of a sentence for the parking plan. So the applicant says there will not be more than three vehicles for construction parked in the driveway. And I guess what I'm wondering is, what is our standard for a parking plan, since that's sometimes been a matter of contention? I do not expect that to be a problem at all with this. I'm really more asking it for, from Doug and our town manager as to what we expect.
Well, we will review the site multiple times a day and be in contact with the applicant if there are any issues related to parking.
That's not really the question I was asking. I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I was asking what in the package should be here in terms of a parking plan? Is that sentence sufficient? We usually get drawings. And are you, I'm just asking.
I think in this case, since it was being entirely contained on the property itself, it felt burdensome to require them to create a new document that would indicate that they were parking in their own driveway. And so took this as sufficient.
There will be no, no cars on the street is what the application is saying. No cars or trucks on the street.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But, but Mr. Town Attorney, the, when the, when the decision is reached, it could be amended to clarify that, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So Council President Shaw, you can, you can amend that in any way you like. Thank you. Councilmember Zoe Gassar.
Yeah, my only question is about notifying the, I guess, the new homeowner at 5603 Surrey, which that house will be more impacted than any of the other homes. And in our file, it says that they attempted to find the new owner. And I guess I was just surprised that they couldn't figure out who had purchased the home. And I just want to make sure our office is aware of that because, again, that house backs right up on the project.
Well, that's, that's a Matt, that.
I just want to be sure.
Good question. Let's let Matt, let's let Matt answer.
Um, so I can pull up the language for the, for the requirements in our code, but I, I took this that they made good faith effort to contact the residents, which I believe, I'm sort of paraphrasing our, our code at this point, but it essentially says that if, for whatever reason, they're not able to get the signature of their neighbor, that they should offer a brief explanation as to whether or not they contacted them and how they did. I, similar to, to the last point that the mayor made, I, I sort of felt that it's, it fit the letter of the law. And if the council felt like we should ensure that they, they do contact before the permit is physically handed off or something along those lines, that we could do that. But that in terms of fitting the, fitting the code and getting it in front of the council, that they had, they had fit the law, fit the letter, the code.
And certainly, Matt can contact the people once the decision is reached, just so they know.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, quite honestly, to contact, to contact that neighbor.
Well, that's not, that's not a problem. That's good. That, that, Matt can do that.
Yeah, as well as the new homeowner of 4714 Fallstone. That information should be available now, as I believe that property is closed.
Okay, well, that's a good point. And we will make sure, we will make sure that all those people are informed as to what's happening there.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any, did you have any other questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel.
No questions for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Storko.
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak regarding this application?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the hearing is now closed. And council, you prepared to make a motion?
I move that the council approve the application for demolition permit and a building permit for the proposed addition of 4723 Fallstone Avenue, including the plan for parking that all construction vehicles will be on the site and not the street, and subject to the notice of the two neighbors, nearest neighbors who had not, were difficult to locate.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I see Zoe Gassar's second. Is there discussion? Hearing none.
I have a question. Marnie, when you say subject to notifying these, these two people, I mean, are you saying that they can't get their permit until they've gotten in touch with them?
What I, what I meant was that they can't really go ahead with the project until they've been in touch, that someone's been in touch.
Okay, well.
Well, that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be very difficult to achieve.
Well, and yet, and yet it has been up to now. I mean, I'm assuming they've been trying. So I guess I'm just wondering, we have in other situations, you know, just required notice be delivered to the address. And in some cases, we don't get confirmation from neighbors. If they've delivered notice to the address, are we still waiting on confirmation at this point? We've, we've talked about it. I, I guess maybe this is a question for Ron too. I mean, if we, you know, if, if the resident has delivered the notice and we don't have confirmation back from them or a signature, are we conditioning a permit on getting those signatures?
We will be more than the signature.
What's contact?
Signature itself is not a requirement because.
Signature itself is not a requirement, because a neighbor can refuse to sign.
Right.
And so the code, as Matt noted, does allow the applicant to say, I've, I've done my best, and here's what I've done.
Right.
So what I'm thinking is, the permit is granted with a condition that it's not going to be issued by Matt until Matt is satisfied that reasonable attempts have been made to provide a copy or to show the application to the neighbors.
And Matt, are you not satisfied about that at this point?
Well, let's ask the council president if that is satisfactory.
What I had moved was subject to notice, so that wasn't approval or it wasn't signature. It was really making sure that it was physically dropped off to those two addresses.
Okay, but I, I thought that that had happened.
Doesn't say that, Franny. It says they made an attempt to find the owner, doesn't say anything was dropped off.
Okay, so are we going to take it as sufficient if they drop off a notice at those two properties?
That was what the council president made.
I just wanted to, I want to clarify it because.
Just clarified it.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking, because it seemed to me that the applicant had made some efforts, and I was trying to find out how long.
They answered your question. The answer to your question was just answered by the council president, which meant.
I want to make sure that the applicant.
Say that again, Council President Shaw.
I said, subject to note, to notice to the two neighbors. And if you read in what, what was written, it says, they attempted to reach Ms. Fortier, left multiple voicemail messages, and sent her an email, but there were no plans dropped off at that house.
Would it, I'm sorry to interrupt, but would it be sufficient?
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Marcus, no, no, no.
Here's, here's why, here's why I keep asking the question. It's not that I don't understand, Marnie, it's that I want to make sure that the applicant understands what they're supposed to do before we vote on this as a condition to their permit.
It, I don't think, I don't think it was what the applicant is supposed to do. I think it is what the staff is going to do. Is that correct, Council President? Yes. So Councilmember Peel, are you clear now with what was the intention of the motion?
So you're, we're putting it on Matt to deliver the notice, and then he can issue the permit?
Is that correct, Council President Shaw?
Yes, I feel like that's a pretty reliable thing to do.
So the resident does not, in fact, need to do anything.
No, do you have any other questions?
I feel like that was important to get clear.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bar, I think you had a question.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say that we've got to make it good faith effort. We can, I've been through this myself with the tree removal, and I could not reach a neighbor for weeks and weeks and weeks. And I checked the code, and the code said, as long as I, was a good faith effort, that was good enough, and we shouldn't hold anybody behind our standard. But I had delivered the plan to their door, I will say that.
Okay, thank you. Are there, are there further comments on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you very much. Next item is the building administrators' report. Mr. Lowmeyer.
Just a couple of things to go over. At forty-eight eleven Cumberland, that building permit was issued on November twenty-third, and work has begun on the project. Fifty-eight hundred deal, that building permit will expire on January fifth. The moving along on the project, a lot of landscape has been completed. I don't know what the interior looks like, but it's, again, I'm going to be cutting it short with the holidays and getting the county sign off before January fifth. So that project is still going to be questionable. At forty-seven twelve Essex, they did provide a height survey of the roof, and it did comply with the RCT code requirements, and work is wrapping up on that project. And at fifty-five oh-eight Uppingham, the original building permit was issued on January twenty-second. That's due to expire next month. I've contacted the applicant about the need to extend a building permit, but haven't received response, so Matt and I will continue to try to get an answer from them on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuyk Hauser.
Yeah, I just have an administrative question. There, there, we're getting two reports, and I just, are we doing double the work? Because there's a chart, and then there's the monthly status report. Do we need both, Doug, do you think?
I'm not, I do my monthly stats report. What's the other one you're referring to?
The permits reviewed by you, it's a chart.
Well, that's, that's just for information purposes. That's for us to, to have names and phone numbers of contacts.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So that's, that's for our internal use, but Matt, I guess Rich originally had given that up to you all, but that's really something we use internally.
Gotcha, okay. Well, if that's, if that's the case, then, then we might want to add fifty-five oh-four Greystone to your monthly status report.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you, Councilmember Storko.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bar.
Fifty-five oh-eight Uppingham, you mentioned that there are too many cars parking on Uppingham has, with, has the intervention worked? Is that now sorted out?
We contacted the homeowner directly, and I, I think it's been less of an issue since then.
Okay, thank you. The next item, hearing motion to consider approval of a one-year extension of contract with American Pool LLC for the twenty-twenty-one town of Somerset Pool Man, for, for pool management in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just reminding everybody that when we approved the American Pool contract, they actually submitted a proposal for three years to us. We, at that time, just said we would take the one year and then go, go year by year at, at that point. I think, given the extraordinary circumstances this year, American Pool did, did a very fine job, and they are already in the midst of staffing for next summer, and would highly recommend that we go ahead and approve the second year, an option year for the next year on this contract. And I believe we have Jerry Seawright from American Pool here to answer any questions, if the council has any.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Not about the contract, but I would like to know when American Pool is planning on finishing, putting all the furniture away, and where, where they are on the winterization schedule.
So the, the final piece of the puzzle is.
Gerald, can you, can you please, Gerald, I'm sorry, can you please identify yourself? Because it's been.
Uh, Gerald Seawright, Regional Manager for American Pool.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here tonight.
Definitely. But yeah, the final piece of the puzzle is the furniture, and we are doing that tomorrow. So I, I should be good for a walkthrough later this week with Matt.
You promise?
Swear to God.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zuyk Hauser.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Peel.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Storko.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Bar.
No questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions? Does anyone raise their hand?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, are you prepared to make a motion, Council?
Move that we approve a one-year extension of the contract with American Pool for twenty-twenty-one Town of Somerset Pool Management in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Well, second.
Thank you, Zoe Hauser. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you very much. The next item is a hearing motion to adopt a charter for the town pool committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you all are aware, we're trying to formalize these processes for all of our various town committees, and we, we drafted a charter for the pool committee, have sort of a template that we've worked off of for all of them, and sent it off as well to the pool committee to take a look at and make any edits, and this is the product that we have before you, and they, they've okayed it and approved it at their meetings for you all to approve, and so that's where we are.
Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuyk Hauser.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Peel.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Storko.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilor Bar.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has anyone raised their hand?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
That we adopt a charter for the town pool committee.
Thank you. And I see Zoe has her second, and is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you very much. The next item is hearing motion to review and approve nominees to the Public Safety Committee, and I will turn this over to the town manager to read the names. I do want to say that I am delighted that Mr. Bruce, that, that, what, what's his title, Matt? Bruce's title?
Well, Bruce is with us, so maybe he will, he would like to introduce himself.
Isn't it Brigadier General?
Oh, yeah, Brigadier General, Bruce Tully, has, has agreed, someone of his extreme stature has agreed to chair this, this incredible committee. So could you, Mr. Town Manager, just read the names for the record?
Sure. So we have nine, nine volunteers for the committee. Bruce Tully, as the mayor mentioned, from Warwick Place, has been nominated as the Chair of the Committee. Dolores Bianca on Surrey Street, Seth Cohen on Greystone Street, Caroline Cooper from Cumberland Avenue, Steve Freeman, Friedman on Essex Avenue, Arcana Gregerson on Dorset Avenue, Max Talecki on Warwick Place, Kumar Vazwani on Trent Street, and I believe Kumar has also joined us this evening. And the final nominee is Joseph Wheatley from Dorset Avenue.
And I, and I do want to point out that this committee is not only, it's public safety, so it's police and fire, and we have at least two member, proposed members that have expertise in fire, Kumar Vazwani and Steve Friedman. And I'm delighted that they all agreed to serve. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Questions, but I would like to add that we know that Steve volunteered to be the council liaison, and I put out a call for an alternate now that we have a committee, and Councilmember Franny Peel volunteered to be the alternate for this committee.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zuyk Hauser.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Peel.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilor Storko.
Sorry, no questions? I'm really excited to move ahead on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Bar.
No question, just thank everyone for their service.
Has anyone, has any resident or guest indicated they would like to speak?
No.
We can get Chair, the Brigadier General, to say, to say a few things. See, I hope everyone's had a chance to watch the Zoom, the Zoom Police Forum, which was, it contained an incredible amount of information, and Bruce interviewed, we were so fortunate to get the Montgomery County Police Chief and the Second District Commander, who, you can imagine what their schedules are like, and Bruce interviewed them, and he, I think he asked almost every question that any resident has asked over the last year about this topic. So did you want to say anything briefly, Bruce?
It's just simply an honor to do this, and I promise to give you my very best efforts professionally and personally, and thank you.
Thank you. And with that, is there, is there further discussion? Is anybody, is, Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make it. I move that we approve of the mayoral nominees to the Public Safety Committee.
I second it.
Thank you. I see Storko's second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you very much. The next item, hearing motion to, well, I do note that we are twenty minutes ahead. I don't think there's anything coming up that any resident, are you comfortable continuing with the agenda, Council, or should we go to start the manager's report for a few minutes? Madam President, what's your comfort?
I'm comfortable moving ahead with this. This is the second meeting that this material has been on the agenda, and it is fairly non-controversial corrections. Franny can explain more of it when she moves it.
Well, now, we're actually, now we're ninety, we're, we're cool now, so yes. So the next item, hearing motion to adopt Resolution Number H-10, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to change instances of vice president to president, clarify the procedures for creation of committees, add a definition of lot, amend the procedures for appeal so that council decisions are not stayed pending a respective petition for judicial review, delete unnecessary provisions, and otherwise amend and clarify existing provisions. Councilmember Peel, I believe this is your legislation.
Yes, I don't really have anything to add to your introduction, Jeffrey. I did write an article for the Journal, and as far as I know, there was no reaction to it whatsoever, so.
Well, thank you for your hard work.
Of course, with this stuff, which is fine.
I do want to thank you for your hard work on this.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can note that we sent notice to the county council. The county council acknowledged your seat and did not have any comments.
Oh, excellent. Thank you for that.
Another non-event.
Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuyk Hauser.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Councilor Storko.
No questions.
Councilmember Bar.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are you prepared to make a motion, Council?
Yes. I move that we adopt the ordinance to amend the building regulations.
Is there a second? I saw Shaw. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Next item, hearing motion to adopt Resolution eleven-twenty-one, a resolution adopting protocol for amendments to the town code. Should I turn this over to the town attorney, Mr. Manager? Did you want to say, did you want to take, take this? Why don't you take, I think we discussed you would take this.
Sure.
This is the protocol for amendments to the code.
Sure, so this was a discussion that the council had had, basically formalizing the process by which a discussion item might be introduced on the agenda, introduced as a piece of legislation, and then adopted. So it just breaks out that process for us in a, in a formal way, essentially following the practice that we have strove to follow previously.
Yes, and I want to thank the council for, for taking time so that it will be clear to residents how a code amendment gets adopted. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Thank you. Councilmember Zuyk Hauser.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Peel.
No questions.
Councilor Storko.
No questions.
Councilor Bar.
Well, only a comment, which is that I, I talked at the work session that one way of making this more communicable is, in fact, to organize a flowchart representation of it, catch the four different pieces of it, and I want to make sure that that is, is recorded. So that's, that's all, otherwise.
Well, thank you for that. I'm sure that our. Well, thank you for that. I'm sure that our town manager can produce a beautiful flowchart. Mr. Town Manager, are there any residents or guests who wish to make a comment or ask a question?
No.
Thank you, Council. Are you prepared to make a motion?
That we adopt the resolution adopting protocol for amendment of the town code.
Thank you, there's, I see Peel's second. Thank you, is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item is an introduction of a resolution which I will turn over to Councilmember, I believe this is Councilor Circo's introduction.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Yes. So I'm pleased to introduce this legislation. This has been in the works for a while. This legislation is to enact the proposal of the Environment Committee to ban gas-powered leaf blowers in the town of Somerset effective January first of twenty twenty-two. So we're looking out a little more than a year right now. The the Environment Committee also has some excellent ideas on an education campaign outreach outreach campaign for town residents to understand what this is about over the next course of the next year and an education campaign for landscapers. So I'm excited to do it. We're introducing it. We also have in the package the town petition. There's been a lot of support from folks. We've held, the Environment Committee has held two forums and looking forward to the council voting on this in January.
Okay, thank you. So per our just past protocol, I will now take questions from council members and then request a a motion. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions regarding the introduction?
My only question is whether we will would, and it's one that you raised, Jeffrey, whether we will have the public hearing at the January meeting or in addition would have a public hearing between now and January.
Well, that will be up to you and me and I'm open to whatever suggestion you make, but we'll I presume we would decide that when we're repairing the agenda.
I would just say the holiday season's a hard time to find some extra nights.
Okay, so whatever.
I don't have any other questions.
So we'll, we will let we will let the council know as soon as, we will be meeting in a week, so we will let the council know.
I do, I do have one question, actually, and that is something that people have been talking about a little bit on the listserv, and that is whether the violation and penalty would be on the landscaper or on the homeowner who contracts with the landscaper.
Councilor Circo, you can answer that.
Sure, that that's a great question. That's something that we as the council can tackle. The way this legislation is written is just an additional line in the town's current code dealing with other construction noise issues. So I would see the enforcement the same as if a contractor is doing some renovation work and they're doing it at seven in the morning on a Saturday, which is contrary to our code. Who's responsible? Is it the contractor? Is it the homeowner? I think it's the contractor.
So under the current code, and this is not proposed to be changed by the ordinance, the town has the discretion to decide to whom to issue the citation, be it the homeowner or the contractor. And the reason that discretion is good to have is because you know, the contractor might be from Virginia and might disappear before you have a chance to serve a citation. So there's a presumption in the code that the homeowner is responsible for what happens on her property and she can receive the citation too.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to emphasize is that the purpose of this legislation is not to issue fines and raise money for the town. The the purpose is to eliminate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. I have no reason to believe that there'll be any issues with excellent compliance in the town and the plan is to follow the lead of Chevy Chase Village and issue warnings initially.
Yeah, I I should probably have said as well that although you have the discretion to issue a citation, the the practice is generally informal warning first, you know, maybe a phone call or a knock on the door. And then secondly, maybe it's a formal warning, a letter. Usually, we're not in the business of issuing citations until there's been friendly reminders.
Well, thank you for raising that, Council President Shaw, and as you know, between now and when it's voted on, amendments can be offered. So thank you. Councilmember Zuyk Hazer.
Yeah, I have a question about the enforcement of this also, and I guess Steve is probably the right one to ask. So the informal warning and then the formal warning and then the citation. I hear you say we're going to follow Chevy Chase Village, but they have a staff of police officers and they also have a, I believe, a full-time enforcement officer, so we can't really follow that. So what's your vision? How do you how do you see this unfolding in in our town, not in DC and not in Chevy Chase Village? How do you see it working here?
I, so I've discussed with our town manager and he feels that he has the the capacity to handle some warnings and citations. And I see it unfolding as well as we handle other construction-related issues, which might not be perfect, but I don't think that in an enforcement process that's not perfect is a good reason to not move forward.
Matt, since you've been here at the town, have you actually issued any citations at all?
No.
Since you were employed by the town?
No.
Have you issued any formal warnings?
Yes.
You have. About how many?
I think two.
And so in eighteen months, you've issued two?
I think that's right. I would, I would just, I think one thing to think about might be how how it's, how violations are reported and how we might follow up on that. Because we may, we may not be, you know, Wayne, for example, might not be working at the time that a violation occurs. And so, for example, the county has a two-party reporting system for noise violations. So we, as this discussion continues, we might think about figuring out ways that we can make sure that we're able to adequately report it and follow up on it. I would just hate for somebody to say, my neighbor's using the wrong kind of leaf blower, and then them to say, no, I'm not, and and us to not not have a good way of figuring out what's what's the correct path forward.
Yeah, I I would feel much more comfortable Steve having something in writing about how this is actually going to be handled rather than just throwing up the cards and saying, well, we're sort of going to do it the way we do everything, you know, everything else in town, because I frankly, I don't know that we do, for example, I don't think we enforce the parking violations all that well for construction projects. I think that's really been a problem and and unhappy. And I just, I would really, I would ask you, I respectfully ask you to iron that out so that we're all well aware of how you see this working. And and Matt, I guess I would ask that you work with Steve so that we would know how this would work during the week and how it would work on Saturdays and how it would work neighbor neighbor to neighbor. Because we are a community, we want a a friendly community. We don't set up neighbor against neighbor and there's been a that kind of talk on the listserv, which for me makes me very uncomfortable. So if you could lay that out step by step so that the community would be aware of how you see this enforcement moving forward, that would be really, really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Peele, do you have any questions?
I do. I have a number of questions and I don't know if they all need to be answered tonight or if I if I could just raise them and maybe Steve and and I'd see that Barton's on the call could maybe come back, circle back. I don't want to take up a huge amount of time on this, but my first question was what Marnie said. Is there a mechanism for charging residents? It sounds like we have an option or we have the discretion under the code. And I just wonder as with anything where there's discretion, I would worry that you know, I I was sort of say like there's could be a bad actor mayor, not Jeffrey, but there could be somebody who takes the discretion in one direction or another in terms of charging landscapers or residents, and I would just want to sort of map that out ahead of time a little bit, just to make sure we have a consensus on how things would be done under ideal circumstances. I'm not saying that we have to have it perfect, Steve, but I think it would be it would be good to to sort of not have things be discretionary in the sense that it's sort of up to one person. And then my next question is what if the county adopts its own legislation in the future? I'd just be curious to know what you think would be the best path for us at that point, whether you would want to come back and look at our legislation and, you know, consider whether there'd be, it would be better to have to basically adopt the county legislation and and maybe be able to turn to the county for some support in terms of enforcement and so on. So that's just a question. Another question is what if gas-powered leaf blower equipment improves over time with respect to noise? And is there any sort of discussion about whether we would look at permitting gas-powered leaf blower equipment if the if the noise levels improved? And then finally, just based on the points that John Short made during the panel the other night, he made two points that I wanted to just raise tonight. One of them was that he said, don't ban all gas-powered leaf blowers. He said, ban the backpack versions because those are the really problematic ones, both for sort of abuse by people using too many at the same time, but also for danger for the workers themselves. So I understand that, but he also sort of suggested that there are other models that can be useful. And as written, our language would prevent the wheeling models from being used. So I just wanted to raise that point. And then his other point was on enforcement, he said it's important to enforce laws equitably and there wasn't an opportunity to really talk with him more about that at the panel. But I I did want to follow up on it because he was making that point in light of the county's rules on pesticides. And he said in his experience that in some cases, they have not been enforced equitably, and he thought it would be important for us to keep an eye on that. So I know that's a lot, but I just wanted to bring it all up for you tonight so that I could ask you and Barton to think about them and and maybe, I don't know if you want to address any of them tonight or not, but that's my list. So I've been paying attention.
We have lots of good questions. I don't think we really have time to go into. That sort of covers everything. The only one I would like to to tackle, I think it's the easiest one, is the question about the county. So we have heard through, the Environment Committee has heard that the county is considering or is interested in some sort of a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, and I would think that if it's a good ban, it would just make sense to sign on and then we would be completely consistent with the rest of the county, but it's very hypothetical at this point because we don't know what it is or when it might happen. Hypothetical, just like maybe there's will eventually sometime in the distant future be gas-powered leaf blowers that are quiet as the wind and I don't feel like we should wait for that. But we'll, I'll have to tackle all those questions when we have sort of open forum for it.
Well, there'll be a hearing.
The hearing, great.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, certainly a point to make, which is that this this ordinance is is being drafted as part of the context, the context of our general noise rules. And that includes the time of day when power equipment may be used. That's part of, it's in the same set of rules as that. So how are we currently enforcing those rules? That's the, you know, only between the hours of eight AM and seven PM for power equipment may be used.
I can say from my own experience with my next door, there's a vacant house next to me and and there's a small company that comes on Saturday nights to cut the grass. And the town has not done anything about the enforcement of using the leaf blowers after seven o'clock at night.
So we we have a more general problem than than just the hypothetical problem that this ban would generate. That is, we're not enforcing our current rules. Is that correct?
There's also county rules on noise.
So this is, the point of this is not to let go into long discussion. If Councilmember Circo wants to respond to that, that's fine.
I, it's, I'm getting to the final point here, which is that if we write something specific to the gas-powered ban, then our code is inconsistent. Because it is part of this more general ban. If we're going to write anything, it should cover all of our noise rules, not this particular ban. That's the point.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to, are you, Councilmember Circo, are you prepared to make your motion to introduce this?
So, yeah, I hadn't realized I had to be emotional, but yes, I I move that that this legislation be introduced to the town for a vote next month.
Thank you. Is there, is there a second? Is there discussion?
I have, I have a question.
Okay.
Who do you want to go first? Marnie asked, so raise your hand.
Go ahead, Franny.
Well, I just, before I wanted to follow up on what Robin was saying because if if we're going to introduce legislation, I would like to make sure we're doing it correctly. And if and I thought Robin was making an interesting point about how we actually go ahead and do this, and this may be the simplest way to do it, but I I guess I'd like to just find out if this is sort of
Well, the
best way to do it.
Is on the motion, which is whether or not you want this introduced or not, not to the merits of the bill.
But that my comment is not on the merits of the bill. My comment is could you let me finish?
Is on whether this is going to be introduced or not, not on the merits of the bill.
Okay.
I guess I have a question.
I think Council President Shaw had a question.
Oh, sorry, and I have, I have a question after the council president.
Well, I'm afraid you would rule what I was going to ask out of order as well, so.
Well, let's let's ask the town attorney. A motion has been made and been seconded to introduce legislation. Discussion is on the motion. The motion is not about the legislation. It's about whether or not to introduce it. Correct?
So, that's right, that's right, Mr. Mayor.
Go on and on about, there's no point in having discussion on the legislation itself. The only issue here is the introduction or not. So you vote yes or no.
Quite clarification. Can we, after there's a vote on this motion, continue the discussion that kind of got cut off when the motion was made?
It's not, there would be no reason to because there's going to, there's going to be a public hearing on this legislation in the future.
The 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 point was that I think people were trying to surface issues so that we're better prepared next month to
That's fine, but that isn't the point of this agenda item.
We started out doing that.
That that is so that that is that that is so that the introducer of the motion will be would be made aware of your concerns. But the point of the introduction, and I will let the town attorney uh clarify this, the point of the introduction, the motion to introduce it is not to create an additional discussion of the merits of the introduction.
Let me ask this question, then. If we vote down the introduction and go back to the other discussion so we can finish whatever comments we have, then we can come back to the
That
Then we can come back to the introduction again.
That that's not the, that's not that's not with the purpose of the agenda of this meeting. This agenda item is whether or not to introduce this legislation. It is not a hearing on the legislation.
But but you encouraged at the beginning before this was introduced, people to
I will let the town attorney, who this was uh his initiative. I will let him comment on what is the purpose of this agenda item.
Sure. Well, the agenda item was not my initiative. The initiative, I think
The process, introduction be made by motion.
Right. So you know, I I will say that under the protocol we we just adopted, it it is contemplated that there's a public policy discussion before an ordinance is drafted and before an ordinance is introduced so that the council, you know, generally agrees with the policy underlining a proposed ordinance. So, you know, usually that discussion happens first. Doesn't have to happen first under the protocol. Under the protocol, a council member can bring an initiative on the spot and say, here's something I've had prepared. I move to introduce it. And then, as the mayor noted, it's generally an up-down vote. However, if a council member has a reservation about the motion to introduce, that can be cured with a friendly amendment. That could be discussed. For example, you could say, well, I like I like your motion, Councilmember Circo. I like this ordinance, but would you accept we change changing this to that? You know, that that type of discussion could take
And and it would be, so it it would be your idea, I, this is all news to me, that, so you're saying that when legislation is introduced, it can be amended on at at the time? Well, that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense to me because then there would be no opportunity for public input. There's no hearing, nothing.
Well, this, this is just the the step one in getting it ready for introduction to the public. So, you know, let's say the council liked this draft, but you wanted to change seven o'clock to eight o'clock. You know, then the motion could be to introduce this ordinance as amended, changing seven o'clock to eight o'clock. Yeah. And then the ordinance is published for the public to consume. And then we have a hearing next month and the the public's got thirty days in between to come up with its comments.
Well, my
But if the amendments were drastic
Introduction, my point is that the introduction of a piece of legislation should not, the 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 item should not turn into a complete unending fishing expedition on the topic. We could be here all night.
Well, yes, and if that results in drastic changes to what's been written, then it can't be introduced tonight because we have to go back to the drawing board and write it up again.
So then, isn't the question really for Steve? Uh, is being the council member that's introducing this, Steve, given all the questions that you've received tonight from your four fellow council members, do you feel it's appropriate to introduce this tonight?
Absolutely. It's been seconded.
Absolutely.
Can you please
Answered all of these questions. I I really don't understand all of the issues. This is a public health issue.
So you
Question has been made and there has been a second, there's now discussion, and if there's no more discussions, time to vote. And then afterward, if somebody wants to, as the town attorney stated, afterward, if somebody wants to introduce an amendment, that's, that is what he said is indicated.
Jeffrey, can I ask?
The 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 motion is on the introduction.
Jeffrey, can I ask you a question? When, when in this process will we have an opportunity to hear answers from Steve that were raised on questions that were raised tonight?
When there's a public hearing on the legislation.
And when will we have an opportunity to talk about whether or not this is the correct format for legislation as raised by Robin Barr?
When, when there's the public hearing.
Like, could I flag that? I I want people to be aware that there is a draft ordinance written. Um, and it is in our council packet. And it is about a one-line change in the language in one forty-three, one forty dash three lawn maintenance activities. And its use of gas powered blowers prohibited is all that it says. It is in the context of um general statements on motorized equipment to the time of day in which they may be used. That that's where it's placed. So it is, people need to know that as we vote on this. That's all I'm saying.
Well, based on the discussion that uh is taking place, which is an excellent discussion, I will be speaking with the um council president when we formulate the agenda. And perhaps we should have a council hearing on this legislation on another night before the vote is taken, before the, before it's considered. But right now, but right now, this agenda item is whether or not to introduce the legislation that has been moved by Councilmember Circo. Because this is the protocol that was set up.
Okay, I'm ready to go.
This is not, and and then, as the town attorney mentioned, afterward, if someone wants to introduce on the spot and which I've not, I don't I I thought, Mr. Town Attorney, regarding the protocols, that legislation wasn't to be introduced until it had gone through a work session and three people agreed to have the council town attorney uh drafted. So now you're saying that that someone can, any council member can introduce an amendment tonight. Does that fit with the protocol that was just passed?
It does fit with the protocol, Mr. Mayor. So the first situation you described would be the the general default approach. Because it's good to have policy discussions before you engage the town attorney to draft something. However, we didn't want the SOPs to be so formalistic that they didn't leave flexibility. The flexibility that is provided is you don't have to use the town attorney. You can come up with any written proposal you want and introduce it on the spot. And then the council can, you know, vote that up or down. Um, with with respect to this issue, um, Councilmember Circo did get permission to engage the the town attorney to write something up and as Councilmember Barr noted, it is just a single sentence addition to the code. Didn't take a lot of time.
Thank you, Council President Shaw.
I know we worked hard to develop a process, but I'm I'm kind of puzzled. We had, uh, the the environment committee had a forum just recently. We've had some discussion on the listserv, which in my mind has raised some questions about what's the right place to place the um citation and some other kinds of issues as well, which I hadn't really thought about before we asked the attorney to draft it. But this has generated um quite a bit of community conversation. And I'm not good at writing amendments on the spot for legislation. So I I would like some time to figure out um whether there would be some other things we would want to put in the legislation. Now, I don't know if that means we um we we go ahead tonight with this with the understanding that we're going
We can't
Quite a bit of amending or whether we vote this down tonight so that we do more writing of this before we
Voting it down means you're just voting down the introduction of what has been drafted.
Right.
That's what, that's what's on the, that is what the discussion is about right now. A motion was made, introduce it. There was a second. So the the motion is whether or not to introduce this piece of legislation.
But we have an opportunity to discuss it and amend it when we talk about it next month.
You know, you have the opportunity to amend the introduced legislation whenever we schedule it, yes. But tonight, I, you, I think what the town attorney said is after this decision is made as to whether or not to introduce it or not. If it, if it's passed, someone can on the spot introduce an amendment. If it's not passed, anyone can introduce whatever they want.
I I have to say that, like Marnie, I don't feel comfortable drafting things on the spot. And I would also want to be sure that the community was on board with any amendments. So doing it on the spot doesn't make me
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying whether you should do it or not. I'm saying that that is what the town attorney just said you can do.
May I please finish, Mr. Mayor? So I don't feel comfortable with that process of it, you know, having it be being introduced next month and then at that point, working hard on some amendments that the community may not, might not even be aware
Well, that is the as the town attorney just explained, that is the protocol that was just passed. So is there further discussion? So so for those of you that are uncomfortable, you vote against the introduction? That that's the, that's the process.
I I think on something like this myself, it it affects every single person.
So then vote against, so then vote against the introduction. That's the process.
And while I'm just speaking my mind and and I think it's really important for things that affect every single resident in this community.
So that's why we have the process and you can vote against it.
Community together instead of dividing it. And I would hope that the council would would work towards bringing the community together on this very important issue.
Okay, excuse me, Barbara. I I hope you're not suggesting that I'm trying to divide the community. I'm trying to protect the public health of the community.
Well, you're trying, it's it's the noise. That's all that we can talk about is the noise.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so let's talk about
These noise levels are way over. I took, I went to American Plant this weekend, Christmas tree shopping, and they had a they had one of their gas powered leaf blowers on the ground. I checked it out. It's still gas powered leaf blower. Rated at seventy-four dB. It is illegal to be bought, sold or operated, but they're using it and they're using it in Somerset.
And just as a point of information, American Plant and Shore Landscaping are one and the same. American Plant and Shore of Landscaping, so
I don't know where he uses that, but he should not be using it anywhere in Montgomery County.
Okay, everyone, is there further discussion on the motion?
I would like to to say that I think we do need to bring this issue along administratively, but I have reservations about the content at the moment, and I'm hoping that we can continue the conversation. At least I would like to have some more conversations with some questions and answers the next time we talk about it. I think the, I think we're going in the right direction with it. I just, I want to make sure that we um get it right in terms of the language that goes into the code, although we do know that we can amend our code if we get it wrong. So I don't think we need to worry so, so much like you know, I mean, I think Steve is right in the sense of not laying the perfect be the enemy of the good. If we need to amend our code, we've done it before. We can do it again. And I I do think it's time for us to bring this forward as legislation. I have some concerns about it as drafted, which I think can be allayed if we can talk about how we talk about about our plans for implementation. And um, and I and I do have some concerns about, you know, taking pictures of landscapers and things like that, which we can talk about another night. I know I I did say that I could wait for my answers until next time. And part of that was because I thought we were going to have more
That is the beauty of the legislative process.
So I do, I want to make it clear that I want to get some answers and
That's fine.
From
When you, when you vote tonight, you are only voting whether you're going to start the process of the discussion of this. It does not mean if you're voting for this, it doesn't mean that you even approve of it.
Right.
All it means is that you agree the way that the town attorney created our legislative process is this is the way that legislation is introduced. This is not the way that you pre-decide whether you're going to approve of it. Because because the discussion tonight has brought out the number of objections and concerns you have about it. And in the beauty of the legislative process is that these things can be amended. And now it's the opportunity to start the process, the formal process of public discussion with a finite everything before tonight was discussion of a lot of different proposals and ideas. Now, Councilmember Circo has come up with a finite proposal. But it's just a proposal. And once it's introduced, if you all agree, then a process begins. And no council member should vote for the final product unless they're comfortable with it in every way. And and that there has been adequate public uh discussion and 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 now is the opportunity, you've all raised all these great concerns and ideas. Now, while the the legislation is going to be under consideration and it doesn't have to be, it only has to be voted on once it's introduced within sixty, is it sixty days, right, Mr. Town Attorney?
So That's right. So after sixty days, the
Based on the discussion tonight, Council President Shaw and I might decide to have two public hearings on it. Another work, there's a, there's ultimate possibilities. But all the decision that's being made tonight is whether to formally start the discussion with with this. So is there further discussion? I I think I saw Councilmember Barr.
Yeah, uh, all legislation is a sausage and we're at the first ingredient of the sausage right now. And that's really what Jeffrey is saying. Uh, in other words, even the language that we've been given in the council packet, we can amend that if we choose to amend it. Um, this is to allow the process to move forward at this point. What the final outcome is will be resolved by us down the line as a result of further hearings. This allows us to start the process. That's that's what it does.
Thank you, Council President Shaw.
Question for our town attorney. I'm perfectly comfortable moving ahead if that's mean as long as, I thought what, I thought what our town attorney said to us was that the kind of discussion we're having tonight, we should have had before the legislation was drafted and we should have worked through what some of the concerns in the community and maybe other council members had before we had a draft. Um, and that that was sort of, so that when it was drafted, it incorporated sort of the best
Let's let him answer that.
Sure. So, yeah, in in my opinion, best practice is to have the policy discussion first so that the council agrees there is a public, a public policy basis for proposing new legislation. Because once you're introducing, in my opinion, you're signifying to the public that at least a majority of the council is comfortable enough with this legislation that we're sending it to a public hearing. So if you haven't yet had the public policy discussion where a majority of you is comfortable enough you're thinking that this is ready to signify to the public that you think it's a necessary ordinance, then maybe you want to have one more month's discussion before you introduce to the public. Because in my opinion, when the public sees an ordinance has been introduced, public's going to think, oh, this is what the council is going to do. This is what the council is going to adopt next month unless we go to the hearing and convince them otherwise.
So can someone please explain to me? So can someone please explain to me how we ended up with, with Ron drafting this legislation before we had the policy discussion among the council? How did that happen?
Well, I, I think that the environment committee made a recommendation, and it's my recollection that, and I could be wrong. I, I thought the council indicated they were interested in going forward with the committee recommendation.
That's my recollection too.
Well, do, do committees have, Jeffrey, I guess this question is for you since you're creating all these committees.
I-
So the committees have the ability to go to you to then go-
That's not what the prot-
So how did-
I would, I would request that county, the town attorney review the protocol again about how we got where we are.
So yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'd have to go back and look at-
It's something to do with the mayor and committees.
So I just don't understand how the environment committee got to Ron to draft something that the council had not discussed first.
I will let, as a council member, Circo answer that question.
Creating hard feelings among the council because we never vetted this. And now, now Steve is introducing it, and I, I just think it's creating hard feelings among the council members. And I, I just hope that we don't go through this another time. I mean, it just seems unfortunate to me. So can someone just tell me how that happened? Steve, how, how did it get to Ron before the council had discussed it?
The council did discuss it. We discussed it at length at, I think, a council meeting and a work session. And we took a vote on whether or not I could send it to Ron. And the vote was five to zero to send it to Ron, as I recall.
Was that the work, that was, that's in the protocol, right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
At a work set, the answer to your question, Councilmember Ziegheiser, is that at a work session, the vote was five to zero per these new protocols to send it to the town attorney to draft.
Can I ask a question now for, for Steve? Do you feel like the policy discussion has, is done? Is that why you're sort of frustrated with these questions about the policy discussion? Or do you, I, I've raised some questions tonight, which maybe you feel like you have quick answers for, but I'm not totally sure that I feel like-
Excuse me, excuse me. It is the discussion, we are in the middle of it.
Jeffrey, I know, I know.
Right now is on the motion.
Okay, I am, I am happy to vote on the motion if that's what you would like. But I would still like to talk to Steve as a colleague, and I'd be happy to wait until afterward if that's what you want.
Perhaps somebody should call the question.
I'll call the question.
Okay. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Wait a minute, Mr. Town Attorney, don't, when they call the question, now we have to take a vote on whether to call the question?
Um, no, you're, no, you're, no, Mr. Mayor.
So she called the question, now we have to take the vote, right. Okay, Councilor Appeal has called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Introducing this, all this, okay, thank you. So now, everyone, thank you for getting through this very robust discussion.
To talk to Steve now about what happens next?
Not now, no, not now. This, we will, moving on to the next item. But please be assured that council member, Council President Shaw and I will create a, opportunities for further public discussion.
I'll send that to you.
Then, thank you. The next item is to consider the approval of town vehicle repairs in an amount not to exceed $5,000, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Manager.
I was muted. Uh, so, um, we have some money in our annual budget for, uh, regular repairs, maintenance and oil change and things like that for the, the town vehicles. But Enrique came to me in November and said that they, when he took the, the truck in, that, um, the, the person that they usually bring it to indicated that there was an issue with the tires and that the tires needed to be replaced in addition to its regular maintenance service. And so I asked Enrique to take it to, get his second opinion on it, and he heard the same thing. And so he's been quoted at $3,500 for, uh, new tires and the maintenance for the town truck. And in addition to that, um, the pickup truck also requires maintenance. And the brake lights recently came on the town truck. So that also needs some work to, to get that fixed. And so, um, I've asked that the council, um, reprogram an additional $3,000 from the pool bridge repairs, which, uh, if you recall, the proposal that was accepted at the last council meeting was for $9,600. And so, uh, we have an extra $5,000 in that line item. So if we reprogram 3,000 of that, that should cover the maintenance for the town vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? No? Okay, thank you. Councilor Ziegheiser.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Appeal.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
How old are the trucks?
They are, they are, uh, I believe, Linda, do you remember, I think it's two, I think they're 10 years old is what, that, I, I think that's what Enrique had said. So, um,
I think they're 10 years old with like still relatively low mileage, considering that they're only kind of used for around the town. So-
I believe Enrique said they only have about 30,000 miles on them. Um, so-
Maybe Enrique should advise us on when we should, which year we should put a capital budget request for new trucks in. Get that from them.
Yeah, okay. Good point. Thank you.
We'll make sure that the budget committee gets on that. Thank you. All right. Council, Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Are you prepared to make a motion?
Up to $5,000 for vehicle repairs to the town trucks and reprogram the money from the bridge account.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
I see, thank you, I see Ziegheiser. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those, thank you. Next item. Motion hearing to consider approval of engaging Pepco for evaluation of town hall parking lot provability of installation of electric car charger. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, so, uh, at the last public forum that we held with the Pepco officials that was primarily focused on streetlights, they had indicated that, uh, they were, they were continuing a program in which Pepco would front the upfront, uh, costs to install electric vehicle charging stations. And so this was just a proposal to engage them and, and to have them begin to look at the viability of it. We would still go back to the council with any propos, any formal proposal from them in terms of placement and, and whatever. But this would at least then essentially give me permission to contact Pepco to start to come out and figure out if, if we have a viable spot here and look into what-
And there's no cost to the town.
Look, yeah, look into, um, you know, what, what would be the, the cost after installation, you know, to, on our electrical bill.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I asked to put this on the agenda.
But do you have any, did you have it?
No, no, I'm only saying, I asked to put it on the agenda.
Thank you for your leadership. Did you, did you have a question or comment you wanted to?
No question.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ziegheiser.
I just have a couple of questions. Who are we thinking, I think it's a great idea, but who are we thinking would, um, use these spots, use these stations?
I think the, I, I believe the, the program with Pepco is for public charging stations. And so the idea is that we would, I think the town hall has been the, the, the place that has been bandied about in, in informal discussions, but that, um, just for argument's sake, at the town hall, we might put in a, a public charging station that residents could then use, plug in their, plug in their vehicles and go from there.
Gotcha. I guess the only request I would make is that we talk to the, um, uh, the, the neighbors that are adjacent to the parking lot.
Okay. Well, that will be, that will be part of the public hearing if it's, but, but I mean, I think you raised a good point about whether we, we probably should find out whether there's a way to restrict it to, um, to residents or, but all this is, is just the first brush. It's not anything. You, the council will have the ability to ask all those kinds of questions later on. But, and if you think of any questions, please forward them to Matt so we, we, so we prepare, be prepared.
I, I believe one, one question that was raised at the, at the forum was whether the, uh, the Pepco station would, the lines would even make it over here. So part of the, part of the, part of the conversation with Pepco is, is it even possible to put one?
Feasibility, it's just feasible, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, I'll get you on next round, Council President. Did you want to answer that?
Yes, I mean, I, I actually thought the issue was that that line, uh, people ask the question of, would this be a fast charging station or would it be sort of your general household thing? And, uh, there was some speculation that the line that feeds that part of Somerset was not a fast charging one. So that would be part of what they would look into, uh, in, in trying to decide whether that was a good site or if, if we did it, what the constraints were.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, thank you. Council, Councilmember Ziegheiser, you're, you were done, right?
Done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Appeal.
I don't have any questions on it for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Circo.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
Yeah, just very quickly, I mean, almost certainly they're reviewing it for a, a level two charging station, which is the overnight charging station. And that requires a normal electricity line, except you just add a second line to it. So it gives you a total voltage of double the normal voltage, and that's what makes it level two. So I asked them whether there was a booking system yet. And the reason for the booking system is that that can be, we can control the people who use it if there is a booking system. There is no booking system at the moment, but their company that runs these things is working on the booking system, so it should come soon. So that's it. And yes, I approve the, they're reviewing the area for suitability.
That's interesting, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Council, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I moved that the council approved, uh, talking with Pepco for a value, asking Pepco to evaluate the town hall parking lot for the viability of installation of an electric car charger.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ziegheiser, thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And our last item is the manager's report. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. So, uh, I guess the, the first thing I wanted to talk about was, um, the financial distributions that we received this past month. In particular, the income tax distributions. This is something that the budget committee is following pretty closely. But November is typically when the town receives its largest tranche of income tax distribution. And our income tax distribution for November compared to last year was a 57% decrease. So, uh, when I, when I sent this information over to, to the budget committee, you know, I prefaced this with probably too soon to, to panic. Because as, as Councilmember Barr astutely pointed out, because the filing deadline was pushed back, we're, we're, there's a good chance that we're seeing delays in that money being collected and then distributed. But that being said, we have been, um, on the lookout for, uh, potential financial impacts because of COVID. And, um, it's, it's possible that, that this is, is going to be one and that, and that we will see them. So, uh, we will get our next large tranche in February. And, uh, so the, the budget committee originally had talked about meeting every three months to do updates on the budget and, uh, had recommended at this point that we hold off until March because at this point, without another, without another large income distribution, we really don't have any more information now than we did when they gave us their, uh, report at the last meeting. Now, uh, I suppose if we have a giant snowstorm that totally blows the budget on that, then we can reevaluate that. But, uh, that was the recommendation of the budget committee, and I, I think that that does make some sense. And, um, maybe when I, when I run through my items, if council members, Shaw or, or Barr want to add anything to that, they might, they might have something.
Well, why don't you run through it and then they can ask questions?
Sure, sure. Other, other budget related items, so mid, mid-November was the deadline to file with, um, Montgomery, Montgomery County for COVID reimbursements. Montgomery County, I, I guess just because of the size of Montgomery County, there was kind of an extra layer of, uh, small R republicanism where FEMA gave its money to the state of Maryland, and it actually was funneled to Montgomery County for reimbursement to local communities, uh, small businesses in Montgomery County and the like. But in any case, the deadline was in mid-November to, to make those, uh, make those claims. And so, uh, we, we filled out that information and applied for about 7,000, uh, between 7,000, $7,500. Very things like, uh, hand sanitizer stations, especially at, at the pool and at, at the town hall. Um, a few of, uh, few of the costs related to Ron's bills that had to do with the election and, and various other, um, COVID protocols. And then, um, the member splash website, because my understanding was that, um, website, uh, websites were actually something that they're, they're more likely to, to give reimbursements for. So, uh, the deadline was November, but that was really to give them time to be reviewing them through the month of December. So we probably won't hear anything for another month or so, um, in terms of what was actually accepted and what the amount will be that we get some reimbursement for. But I did just want to flag that for you and let you know that, uh, we, we filed that paperwork. The other budget related thing has to do with the audit. So, um, the deadline for the audit is in the beginning of January. So, uh, we are aiming to have the audit, uh, the auditors give their presentation at the, uh, January council meeting. We had a meeting between the auditors and the audit committee this past week. And, um, we'll meet with them again once things are finalized for the audit committee to look over the, the draft audit and make any recommendations to the council. Couple of, um, moving on to, to some infrastructure stuff. A big one is with the, the tripping hazards, which we replaced, uh, almost all the sidewalk tiles. A big one is with the the tripping hazards, which we replaced almost all the sidewalk tiles with pronounced lips in town. There was one address that we haven't done. I'm having Tolbert take a look at it. It's at fifty four oh three Surrey Street. Because there was it was fixed on one side, but there's still an issue on the other side of of the tile. And so before we do any replacement, I I want to make sure that we're not damaging the tree there. Let's see. So I met with Walter Ray today about leaf vacuuming. So that's been going on through November. He recommended that we we start to advertise and try to get people as the leaves fall at a at a slower rate. Try to get it. I think what we're going to do is send out something to try to encourage people to to get everything out by month two weeks from today. So Monday, the twenty first, which gives folks that last weekend to do any raking to the curb or whatever. So they're going to do regular pickups all throughout then. And then between the holidays and and New Year, we'll probably do one or two smaller smaller pickups to to close out the year. In terms of the the town's website, the Communications Committee is requesting town direct the staff to create a an RFP to redesign the town websites. This is a discussion that's been going on for a while. And actually, back in February, I had contacted Civic Plus, which is the company that designed our current website, I think eight years ago or so. And they gave four different proposals at kind of four different levels, ranging from your most basic quick pickup to a complete overhaul of the website, and that ranged from about seven thousand to seventeen thousand dollars. The Communications Committee has really put an emphasis, I think, on on the town website as a way to improve communications in town and effectively communicate to town residents about legislation, town events, and all things town related. Our our listserv is actually going to end in mid-December. So Yahoo Groups is no longer supporting listservs. And so we're going to continue on with the constant contact email blasts. But the Communications Committee is is would like us to shift our communications away from creating a new listserv and a new apparatus in that direction and instead focusing on improving the town's website. Just trying to hit some of the the bigger items here. Well, one one thing I wanted to touch base with you all is the Montgomery Municipal Cable. So um I have served on MMC since since I was hired here. Marnie was the Somerset representative as well, and actually, that that's how I I got to know Marnie pretty well. And it's it's really great. Our the group's annual meeting will be in January. I wanted to throw it out there in case any council members or if council had somebody in town that maybe would want to serve as the town's representative. I am willing to serve again. I I don't think I'm willing to serve as the board president again. I I just am not able to focus enough time on it, I think, to to do the job well. And my to be honest, my my preference would be to not serve, not because I don't enjoy it or because I don't think it's interesting. But again, just so I can focus. I I just don't think I have the opportunity to focus on it the way that I I really wish I could. But as I said, I'm happy to continue to serve because I do think it's interesting, but wanted to kind of put that birdie in your ear if if you all wanted to think about anybody, anybody that you all might be interested in serving as as the Somerset liaison to that group. One thing that I don't know that we talked about as a council yet, but the the Norwood Park Dog Park is it they are accepting comments on on the dog park through the month of December. And at that point, the next step would be to go into the design phase. So I just wanted to flag that for all of you. In case you you wanted to get more involved or or you know, wanted wanted me to get more involved in disseminating information or or whatever it might be. And I I also had an update here on the Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty. There's a meeting tomorrow night, and I think Somerset will be pretty well represented. Again, I'll I'll sort of circle back maybe when I'm done and and let Council President Shaw or or Mayor Slaven jump in if if there's any information that they wanted to add to that. We've talked about a cheat sheet for committees. So Mayor Slaven and I have been working on that. We'll have that ready for you to consider at the the December work session. And you know, I I think the last thing that I I'll make a comment about tonight is just letting you all know that we offered the special projects assistant job to a woman named Donna Colley, who is a semi-retired risk officer who who worked for Fannie Mae for many years. She um actually heard about the job through Mayor Slaven. So I thank thank you, Mayor Slaven, for his outreach efforts in getting some good candidates to come to us throughout the process. She she just asked all the right questions and and seemed to really get it. So I'm meeting with her tomorrow. She's she's actually going to come to the town hall and and look at some of our files and get a get a handle on on what we have there. And hopefully, at at the January meeting, I'll invite her invite her to the meeting so she can maybe introduce herself to you all, at least virtually. But she's very, very nice person, and I think she'll be a great addition to the team to help us on this project. And then I I one last thing was I I think I'd mentioned this a while ago, that Enrique had told me informally that he was thinking about retiring at the end of June, and I had another conversation with him recently, and he he reiterated that that was his intent to retire at at the end of this fiscal year, basically. So so I'll I'll be meeting with him to kind of go over the form and position and if he has any recommendations. But that will be something that we'll we'll think about as we get into spring, I guess. So I I I did jump over some items. I'm happy to talk in greater detail about any of them, answer any questions.
Thank you for that excellent report. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I had noticed that you wrote about the holiday fund and the creating short videos. I guess I'm happy to do a thank you video, but I was wondering whether at the point when the mayor presents the checks to the staff, whether there'd be any kind of Zoom session where we could all kind of cheer and whatever.
Well, we well, we hadn't planned that, but we'll we'll work on that. Thank you. We'll work on that.
Yeah, thank you. Good, good idea.
Is that your only question? Thank you. Council Member Zuyghauser.
Yeah, I I guess my only question is with the committees, Matt, are the committees submitting their minutes to you? And then are you posting them on the website? I haven't looked, so I don't know. And are they being recorded as well? Or what's the protocol for that?
They
They all have charters.
They are uh not being posted on the website right now. In part because I I'm not entirely sure. We don't really have a good place to put them on the website. We do have them saved, but that's sort of
Well, Councilor Zuyghauser, that is a very good point, and we will that's something that needs to be addressed in the committee protocols document. So we will be we will we will think about that because that's a very good point.
Was interested, wasn't able to attend a meeting, but was
Yeah, that that is the kind of thing that we need to. So so
Thank you.
I I believe the document is going to be circulated pretty soon. So scrub it.
So but I guess I guess the first question was, are they submitting the minutes to you, Matt? Are you getting them from all the committees?
We've had mixed results on that in the past, I think, with these new with these new charters, which do I believe that they address it. So we've we've, as we've sort of formalized these committees, we've emphasized the importance of of keeping minutes.
I don't think so that is one of the reasons why we had need to have protocols and instructions. And I and I, you know, as I've recruited all these committees and these chairs, you know, I I've tried to discuss all these important things that the council cares about. And that's why I want to make sure they're all in a document that we can give, we can orient people. So it's been a long work in progress, but that is one of the reasons we need to have clear policy and understanding so everybody will understand what they're supposed to do. And so that when I'm recruiting chairs, they understand that that's one of their responsibilities. You know, and that and then everybody, you know, that it's that it's includes all the concerns that all of you have. Very outstanding concerns, I might add. So so scrub it, Councilmember Zuyghauser, and you ready to add to your heart's content?
No, I just because I've reached out to Matt on a couple of occasions and asked, you know, for for meetings that I've missed. And I
So we wanted to figure all that out.
Other people would too. And then I I noted that you all are meeting with the Somerset principal, the principal of the Somerset Elementary School, and I just wondered
When we meet with her and the and someone from the police, we try to meet them on a quarterly basis. But she's been very elusive. But is there something you wanted us to bring up with her?
No, I just wondered why we I didn't realize you met with her.
Yeah, we but oh, yeah, for years, I we meet with her about, you know, issues. For example, like the basketball court that's open that shouldn't be, for example, the illegal signs they put up about no parking on deal and all these, you know, and and the the field, you know, remember all there was issues at the field?
Yes.
That you said and and the resident.
We've had we've had issues with drop drop offs and pickups in the morning and, you know, blocking people's driveways, things like that.
So anytime any council member has an issue related to the school, please let us know because when I write to her, cry to call her, she's responsive. But anyway, we're supposed to meet with her, I guess, on the fourteenth, right, Matt, at two o'clock?
That's what I have on my calendar. So hopefully that
Tie down. So anyone that has issues, please let us know.
Okay, then I just have one other question because I worry about the safety of you all. And for Matt and Linda, and now you're bringing in a new person, Donna. Are you I don't know what your schedule is, and honestly, I haven't been to the town hall in months, but I won't ask a question. I'll just make a statement that if you all are, and I don't know what the county rules are on this either, but if if Linda and Matt and Jeffrey and now this new higher Donna are going to be working in the town hall every day and sharing the restroom, that 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 concerns me as personally, not even as a council person. But on a personal note, I would just ask that you all be very, 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 very careful and and think about whether now is the time for
We're isolated here, but also I think I think Linda talked to the cleaning people about that.
Yeah, but it's not if you don't it's not from the surface. It's the droplets in the air and and the air is circulating in the town hall building. And you are all sharing that air. And and I have a very deep concern for all of you because you you know, people are people are 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 getting sick. And and I don't know if you feel that you need to, but I see, I'm not sure if Linda's in the office, but I see Matt's in the office and Jeffrey's in the office, and Donna will certainly have to work in the office. And and that, on a personal note, that that really concerns me. That's it.
We don't. Well, rest assured that we are very, we wear masks.
Well, I know none of you are wearing masks now, and you're all sharing the same air.
I'm at home.
You're home. Good for you. Okay.
Well, the doors open a lot, and I don't I don't, you know, I I we're doing everything we can. We we don't, we don't interact. Usually, I call Matt from here. I come right in here and 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 the new person will be able to work in that other office when she's here.
Okay.
And I I don't, you know.
I just I just worry, you know, I just worry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions for tonight.
Councilmember Circo.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilor Barr.
I'm just going to flesh out a little bit of what Matt said because it's relevant to what Barbara said. This is to do with the website, and Barbara's comment about committee minutes. At the moment, it is hard to post committee minutes on the website, partly because there's no good place to pay post them, and partly because it's actually quite hard to post them. What we want is a much more fluid website that it's easier to post such that the committee chairs can post minutes directly just with a quick check by town staff that it's it's okay. That's the model we're trying to go to. And that's why the 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 Communications Committee is wanting us to have a new website to make it that much easier. The other point about it is that we we all watched that municipal league seminar on the social media communications and watched it again and noticed how much they depend upon their websites. In other words, what they're doing in their Twitter feeds and in their Insta message, whatever it is, is referring always back to their websites. So unless you've got a good, successful website underlying all that, then your your other social media are going to fail. So the first thing we have to do and get right is that website. So that's that's the point. And the Communications Committee is going to be explaining all that in January when they bring it through. That's all.
Okay, well, thank you. And I I want to note, yes, Council President.
I just wanted to remind people about the work session. It is on Monday, December fourteenth, from five to seven. And I believe everyone has a copy of the revised revised version of the permitting information for the website. Thank you to Franny for taking a crack at that. That's what the document that we'll be looking at and trying to finalize so that we've got our website material up. I have a couple of questions for you, Matt. Are does Doug's letter need more work? I mean, that was another thing that the ad hoc committee wanted. And would we be prepared to have something for realtors?
Yeah, I can I can I can I can make some edits to that and give you an updated copy on if you'd like.
Madam President, we're meeting next week. The three of us.
The work session is a week from tonight.
When is our meeting?
We don't have a meeting set up.
Didn't we say a meeting?
I don't think so. The Matt, Matt, are you going to be doing any more work on the forms we looked at? Do we have to look at them again? Are you guys ready to adopt them? The building application forms, I saw you didn't use them tonight, but that was a pretty easy, simple application.
Yeah. I didn't know if we if the council wanted any further discussion on it, if we wanted to formally approve them or adopt them, if if Approve them or adopt them, if, if, if you feel like it's just an administrative thing and they've adequately addressed. The concerns, then I'm happy to, to start using that from here on out and we can adjust as. As, as you like, you know, if there, if there are things that you don't like about it, then we can change that as we go.
Have you figured, find that out when you use things? I think people kind of felt like it was an administrative document and we didn't need council approval. Okay.
Okay, great.
And Jeffrey mentioned he wanted the council to take a look at the committee guide, which should not, he said, be a hard thing to review. So that would be another item for the council agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, Marnie, I, I, the sound dropped off, so I, I, I missed the beginning of what you said.
Protocols. She's talking.
Okay.
Agenda for the work session.
Yes, yes.
Jeffrey had said he wanted us to look at. The last thing I wanted to bring up was, and maybe Jeffrey can say a bit about this. I think, Matt, did you circulate the Juwondo proposal that he's introducing tomorrow to all the council? You asked whether I should. You should do it and I said yes, and Ron has also provided some comments and Jeffrey has met with Lo Juwondo.
I have not circulated that councilwide, I think. I think Steve got a cop, I think Steve got a copy of it.
From the coordinating committee, maybe?
I think, I think you want to, I think that. I think it's something that we can, the council can talk about in the January meeting.
Okay, so I think you should circulate to, to all the council.
I'll forward that to everybody right now.
Basically, it's a proposal to. Eliminate single-family zoning.
Did I say that to everybody?
Okay.
In, in any case.
Thank you, thank you.
It's, it's, we talked about it at the Fritzen meeting today. It's related to, or it could be related to Thrive Montgomery.
Are, are you? Are you bringing it up because you're putting it on the work session agenda?
It was a question about whether we should.
Well.
I don't know if we'll have time.
I, I don't think you, you need to, but also we, I don't know why we didn't make our meeting, so maybe we can do it. Next Monday before the, before the work session, but. Okay, everybody, thank you. I do want to point out.
There's one other thing. I'm sorry, Jeffrey. I'm sorry to interrupt. I wondered if people wanted to, I know Franny said she was going to kind of close the loop with Steve. I don't know whether other people wanted to send Steve comments. I think I'm going to put something in writing to send to Steve just.
Okay, let's talk about that when we meet, when we, when we plan the, the hearing schedule. Okay, thank you, everyone. I want to point out that today is Zola Schneider's 95th birthday.
It was yesterday.
It was yesterday?
Yes, it was yesterday.
Anyway, yesterday was Zola Schneider's 95th birthday.
She looked great and there were balloons and champagne and.
And thank you, everyone, and we will see you on Monday.
Have a great evening. Thank you all. Good night.
Hey, thank you.